I'd like to call to order the April 29th, 2024 meeting, the Powhatan County Board of Supervisors' regular meeting. Ask Ms. Morissette to do Pledge of Allegiance and Mr. Denotti to do the invocation. And in between the pledge and invocation, we'll be having a moment of silence for our beloved county attorney, Tom Latchney.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father God, what an incredible opportunity to serve such an amazing community. We thank you for that opportunity. We thank you for the ability to be a light to a dark place at times. We ask that you continue to be with us, help us remain civil, help us remain humble as we do your work. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Quick introduction, Ms. Kelly Kemp is our county attorney from night. She's filling in tonight, so just letting you all know. Request to postpone agenda items, additions, deletions, or changes in order presentation. Not hearing any, can I get a formal approval of the agenda?
Motion.
Second. On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
County Ministry updates.
Yeah, just one quick thing to share this evening, just a reminder that the Powhatan County Fair is coming up, that's May 10th through 12th, free admission and free parking. That's all I've got.
Okay. That brings us to our proclamations. We'll start with A, which is P-2024-03, recognizing May 2024 as National Building Safety Month.
To recognizing that our growth and strength depends on the safety and essential role our homes, buildings, and infrastructures play, both in everyday life and when distress or strikes. And whereas our confidence in the resilience of these buildings that makes up our community is achieved through the devotion of building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, labors, plumbers, and all other construction industry who work year-round to ensure the safety of constructed buildings. And whereas these professionals and officials are dedicated members of the International Code Council, a nonprofit that brings together local, state, territorial, tribal, and federal officials who are experts in the built environment to create and implement the highest quality codes to protect us in buildings where we live, learn, work, and play. And whereas, these modern building codes include safeguards to protect the public from hazards such as hurricanes, storms, snowstorms, tornadoes, wildfires, floods, and earthquakes. And whereas, Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role of our community's local code officials who assure us of safe, sustainable, and affordable buildings that are essential to our prosperity. And whereas, Mission Possible is the theme for the Building Safety Month 2024, encourages us all to raise awareness about building safety on a personal, local, and global scale. And whereas, each year in observance of Building Safety Month, people all over the world are asked to consider the commitment to improve building safety, resilience, and economic investment at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to us by local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and the federal agencies in protecting lives and property. Now therefore, the Board of Supervisors of Powhatan County does hereby proclaim the month of May 2024 as Building Safety Month. Accordingly, we encourage our citizens to join us as we participate in Building Safety Month activities. To accept this award, our building official, David Donovan.
Thank you. And I wanted to share just a couple of other things we have coming up. We've got our annual Building Safety Month cookout coming up on May 22nd, 12 noon. We'll have free lunch if you all or any of the public wants to stop by, talk about the code, just have some good discussion. We'll be glad to have you in our company. We were also the first locality to submit a Virginia International Code Council proclamation again this year, so that's something that we're proud of. And then, in my second year as Region Chair of Region Six Chair for VBCOA, we once again got Region of the Year. So we're very proud of what we do here in Powhatan. About 75% of the application material comes from things that we do here locally. So I want to thank you all for the support, and we look forward to being able to bring more to Powhatan County and then sharing that with our region as well.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Michelle. How about a round of applause? Our next proclamation is 2024-04, recognizing the contributions of Daniel G. Jones to Powhatan County, also Dan and Mr. Dan Jones.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Before you, we have the members of the Powhatan County Economic Development Authority and our Economic Development Director, Roxanne Salerno. And we're here tonight to honor Dan Jones for his many, many years of hard work here in Powhatan County. Dan, come here, we have a proclamation for you, recognizing the contributions that you have made over more than 35 years. Whereas Daniel G. Jones has served with distinction for the Economic Development Authority for 35 years and has demonstrated exceptional dedication and commitment to the economic vitality of Powhatan County. And whereas, Dan Jones has served on the Powhatan Industrial Development Authority for over 16 years, served as a Powhatan County Economic Development Director for 10 years, and has faithfully served on the Powhatan Economic Development Authority for nine years. And whereas, Dan Jones has been instrumental in participating in various local projects of significant economic value to Powhatan, including transportation improvement on Route 711 and Route 288, assisting in the 2017 Economic Development Strategic Plan and new branding initiative, designing and seeing that entrance signs to the county are well-placed. He's done site development and county bonding. And whereas, Dan Jones efforts, through Dan Jones's efforts, Powhatan County has advanced meaningful development while continuing to keep the rural character of Powhatan in mind. And whereas, Dan Jones has recently retired from his long tenure and years of tireless service on the Powhatan Economic Development Authority, having served as chairman for the past four years. Now therefore, we, the Powhatan County Board of Supervisors, on behalf of the citizens, do hereby proclaim our sincere appreciation and admiration for Dan Jones for his extensive service to the community and dedication to promoting and improving Powhatan and its citizens, adopted this 29th day of April 2024.
Frank, thank you, sir. Thank you. I want to take a minute to thank Frank and this incredible team that you have, all just wonderful, top-rate individuals, and I don't think you could have made a better choice than add Chris Yes to make up this team. I think you have five, five really professional, highly respectable individuals. And I want to thank you, Steve, in particular, the board for making this happen, and Roxanne, and the hard work that each of you do. I, and all of the citizens of this county, appreciate. It's sometimes a thankless task, but I want you to know that we do appreciate your hard work, your efforts, and I appreciate this very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. That brings us to C, 2024-05, recognizing April 2024 as Child Abuse Prevention Month.
And joining me is Susan Wellborn. Susan is one of the Department of Social Services CPS investigators. Whereas the health and safety of all citizens is important to the prosperity and well-being of Powhatans' families and communities, and whereas our children are a most valuable resource and will shape the future of the Commonwealth, and whereas child maltreatment is considered to be one of the nation's most serious public health problems, with scientific studies documenting the link between abuse and neglect of children and a wide range of medical, emotional, psychological, and behavioral disorders. Whereas the majority of child maltreatment cases stem from situations and conditions that are preventable in an engaged and supportive community, and whereas all citizens should contribute to a safe nurturing environment to support families raising children. And whereas effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of community partnerships, and whereas we acknowledge that we must work together as a community to increase awareness about child and family well-being, because prevention remains the best defense for our children. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Powhatan County Board of Supervisors has hereby recognized April 2024 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Powhatan County.
Thanks for all you do. That brings us to 2024-06, recognizing April 2024 as Older Americans Month.
You're here.
And this is Cheryl Good. Ms. Good is with Senior Connections, who's our area agency on aging partner. Whereas Powhatan includes a growing number of older Americans who contribute their strength, wisdom, and experience to our community. And whereas communities benefit when people of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds are welcomed, included, and supported. And whereas Powhatan recognizes our need to create a community that provides the services and supports for older Americans that they need to thrive and live independently as long as possible. And whereas Powhatan can work to build an even better community for our older residents. Now therefore, the Board of Supervisors of Powhatan do hereby proclaim May 2024 to be Older Americans Month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It is an honor to accept this proclamation, recognizing Older Americans Month and the work of the Capital Area Agency on Aging. Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you. Brings us to our last proclamation, 2024-07, recognizing May 1st through the 5th as a time to remember fallen firefighters.
Whereas the United States Congress and the President of the United States have designated the Day of the Annual National Fallen Firefighters Memorial Service as a day to honor firefighters and emergency services personnel who have sacrificed their lives to save others by lowering the American flag on all federal buildings to half-staff. And whereas, an average of 80 firefighters courageously make the ultimate sacrifice in the line of duty each year. And whereas, firefighters and emergency service personnel play an essential role in the protection of lives and property in our community. And whereas, it is of a major importance that we increase our efforts to reduce deaths, injury, and property loss from fire. And whereas, May 1st through 5th marks the National Fallen Firefighters Memorial Weekend. And whereas, we invite Powhatan citizens to join us in lighting the night red for fallen firefighters and their families. And whereas, we call upon all citizens of Powhatan County and patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe the Day of May 5th, 2024, in recognition of the patriotic services and dedicate our efforts of our fire and emergency services personnel by lowering American flags on all buildings to half-staff. Now therefore, the Board of Supervisors of Powhatan County do hereby proclaim May 1st through 5th, 2024, as National Fallen Firefighters Memorial Weekend. Accordingly, we encourage our citizens to join us as we participate in light the night red for fallen fighter activities. Here to accept this is our Deputy Chief, Taylor Goodman.
On behalf of Chief Warner, who had a commitment tonight and cannot be here, we thank you so much, and also on behalf of the 300 career and volunteer firefighters who make up Powhatan County Fire and Rescue, many of who are in the audience tonight, we're deeply indebted that we can do this and for the constant support that the board has provided over the past many years. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, and then we have one presentation this evening, so Powhatan, we're fortunate to have excellent public safety personnel between our sheriff's office, our volunteer and career fire rescue volunteers and contract staff, and our 911 dispatch center folks. So out there doing great work every day, but tonight there's three specific incidents that we'll recognize some individuals for, for their service. So when I call your name, please come down and receive your award from Deputy Chief Goodman. So this one was on March 10th, 2023, the lifesaving actions taken at the scene of a cardiac arrest, which resulted in the patient being discharged from the hospital in less than four days without complications. So we would like to thank and award Kenneth Aliceburg, Don Hausma, Art Tate, Phil Warner, Ronnie Short, Kevin Mounts, James Sullivan, Charlie Holland, David Berry, Jamie Babcock, and Rudy Gregory.
A quick point that I want to make is that the lifesaving measures that are taken in place are not just always fire department or our EMS providers, but also the working relationship we have with sheriff's deputies as well, who, you know, play a lifesaving role every time that we go out. So we certainly appreciate their help.
Thank you to one of y'all. Thank you.
Well done.
Brings us to our next award. When I call your name for this one, please come forward, just like the others. On October 25th, 2023, lifesaving actions taken on a patient who entered cardiac arrest while being transported from Eastwood Pine Court and resulted in the patient being discharged from the hospital. Jeffrey Wallace, Travis Finch, and Daniel Perkins.
All right, and then our final award this evening, this happened on November 8th, 2023, lifesaving actions on a cardiac arrest patient on Anderson Highway, which resulted in the patient being discharged with a positive prognosis. Leighton Dean, Eric Edwards, David Berry, Art Tate, Carol Smith, Don Hausma, Nate Jones, Mike Moser.
And we also have a surprise tonight is that we were absolutely able to stay in contact with a patient who was involved in this, who actually is here in the audience with us tonight. Mr. Arnold is here, he looks great, and we certainly appreciate him coming out to support the people who supported him in his time of need. So thank you to all these personnel.
What a great presentation. Thanks for all y'all do. That brings us to our first public comment period, three minutes for individuals, five minutes per group. Carl Schwenderman.
Oh, hello, my name is Carl Schwenderman. I found out, I have a question for the Board of Supervisors. I found out that they want to build, oh, this thing ain't working. Hello, okay. They're building a, they want to build a 9,000-square-foot building next to the county administration building for like the Goochlin services or something, and I found out that the building is not going to include a section of sidewalk along Old Buckingham Road. Is there a way that the Powhatan Board of Supervisors could talk to the developer of the 9,000-square-foot building to include building a section of five-foot-wide sidewalk set back like 10 feet from Old Buckingham Road? Because if they don't build the sidewalk, if they should, they need to build the sidewalk with the building, because it'll be relatively cheap to add the sidewalk with the building when they build the building's parking lots and do grading and connect the building to utilities, but it'd be much more expensive and complicated to build the sidewalk later after the building is all done. Also, it would also disturb the property a lot less by building the sidewalk at the same time as the building versus later on when they have to re-dig up everything. Thank you.
Brett, would you like to address that?
Yep, Mr. Schwenderman, thank you. I think you gave us that comment previously, so we reached out to the builder on the project and we're talking with them, and we're going to try and include the sidewalk in that, because it would be much, much easier and cheaper if we do it now rather than coming back later. And it's half of that project we had previously planned to do anyways and then just hadn't completed it yet, so we're actively talking about that.
Thank you, Carl. Anyone else in the audience would like to speak at the first public comment period, you're welcome to come forward. Not seeing anyone, that brings us to the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That brings us to old business. R2024-21, Walker's Farm Estate.
Good evening. This is an application for a private road off of Clayville Road to be known as Walker's Farm Estates. This is a continuation from the meeting we had last month where the case was deferred. The proposed road would serve nine new lots in one existing lot. Since that last meeting, staff have been in discussion with the applicants and have resolved the outstanding issues of access in the buffering, to which the applicants have agreed, so I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Not seeing none, I would like to make a motion to approve R-2024-21.
So moved.
In a second, do we need a roll call though?
Yes, please.
Roll call.
Okay. Mr. Denotti?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Kenny?
Aye.
Mrs. Morissette?
Aye.
Mr. McCollum?
Aye.
That brings us to B, R2024-30, adopting fiscal year 2025 operating capital budgets.
All right, so a quick summary here, we'll recap where we stand on our budget deliberations. First, just the timeline, and as you know, staff actually begins working with this with our departments and schools, you know, three or four months in advance of when it starts with the board this year. So in February, started some one-on-one meetings with you all, just introduced the base budget and get some feedback, then formally presented it in late February, then had our joint workshop meeting with the school board to go over theirs, and at the same time, they've been deliberating and working on theirs and having numerous meetings, departmental budget and personnel request reviews. We spend significant time meeting with each department, sometimes multiple times reviewing their requests, vetting them, and seeing what options there are. Then in March, discussed the capital improvements projects. Then at the last meeting, had our public hearing on the real estate tax rate and adopted the 69-cent rate, and then had the budget public hearing in April 22nd and also adopted the fee schedule. Some highlights of the proposed budget. Total 4.9% increase in general fund spending, and we have another slide, a little bit that will show you kind of where we stand against others in the region and what they're looking at. This budget maintains the 69-cent tax rate, which again is a longtime low for the county. Net increase of 5.7 full-time employees. We actually have a proposal in here, as you discussed at the last meeting, to add two full-time firefighters mid-year, so that would really be 7.7 when we go into next year. 4% raise for both county and schools to remain competitive in the region. Common class for social services, they were not part of ours last year, it's a relatively small component at 37,000. Total school transfer of 21.9 million, or an increase of 500,000 in the local transfer, and then a number of FY25 CIP projects would be funded. So proposed personnel, part-time firefighter pool, so this would be no additional persons, but more money available to increase hours for part-time to draw from and cover service. Maintenance worker one for Parks and Rec to cover field maintenance and facilities upkeep. Currently, our Public Works facilities handles much of that, so this would give Parks and Rec actually some of their own employ- Rec actually some of their own employee in that area to do more of that. Part-time farmers' market manager. The plan is to share a person with Goochlin County and sharing the funding on that. So this would be our contribution to keep the local Palatane Farmers Market going here. Transportation manager, as you know, that would be funded with some of our local CVTA funding. Utilities operator three, our, and something I only just learned recently that we have not added an employee in our public utilities department in about 20 years despite the, the growth they've seen, the significant increase in mandates and the regulatory environment. So that's quite something. But with DQ requirements, we've recently been pushed into another tier, which means more testing, more scrutiny, and, and so it's time to add somebody there. Additional sheriff's deputy, that's something you all advocated for, and we moved some things around and we're able to fund that as well as a vehicle. Also a part-time detective, a part-time courts and civil process clerk. And we are removing a purchasing manager from the finance department that we can repurpose. Then at the last meeting, we had some discussion about firefighters, so increasing those. So the request originally was for, for three. That was not funded. That was something that you all supported and wanted to see. So we met with chief and deputy chief and our finance department and kind of put our heads together and agreed that we could do two to start us out, bring them in mid-year. So the cost of that would be 94,000. So that's something we will, we have a number of ways we can fund it. So we feel comfortable with that. Go ahead tonight, making that commitment, and we'll bring back a formal proposal later on for your approval to do that. But we'll be able to make it happen. And the, a lot of discussion last time about one-time money versus recurring money. The turnout gear, that would be a one-time, you know, appropriate use of, of some of our one-time funding we can use. And there's also some gear that we have that may be able to be repurposed to reduce that cost. But we feel, feel confident and comfortable that this will be a good step forward for us and we can do it in this way. And then we were also last time talking about the $100,000 we have set aside for the volunteer recruitment grant. I think maybe caused some confusion with that. We had said that we've applied for the grant. If we don't get it, we have the funding in there to, to maintain that program. If we do get it, we could use that money to fund this. So I just wanted to be clear that we would not be taking funding for volunteers and putting it towards career staff. That we're going to do our volunteer recruitment program either way. Either we get the grant and we do it that way, or if we don't get the grant, then you all have committed the funding to keep that going. So I just wanted to be, be clear that we're not unfunding that program in favor of career staff. We're, we're going to support the volunteers through that either way. And, and this actually, this staffing increase was something that originated from our volunteers as well that they support and ask for. So we are happy to be able to find a way to do that. And then one other change that we propose not noted here, spoke with supervisor powers and have indicated an interest in increasing funding to Palatane Free Clinic. They do great work in the county. We certainly support them. Our current contribution is 2,500. Mr. Powers had asked if, if we would be agreeable, if we could up that to 10,000 in total, so an additional 7,500. That's small enough that, that we certainly can. So if the board is in favor of that, we can do it. We would just take it from contingency. Or we typically estimate our revenues and expenditures. We're pretty conservative and come out on the good. So, so one way or another, again, we're confident that we could fund that if the board would like to. And staff certainly has no issue supporting the good work of, of Palatane Free Clinic. And some of the CIP projects that would be funded. So there is no, other than we have some vehicle leasing, there is no debt. So our, our longer-term CIP project list, certainly we will likely need to borrow at some point, but that's a discussion we'll start likely next month when we have our financial advisor come in, meet with us, and go through the future year CIPs. But FY25, not proposing any borrowing. So it's all cash funded, grant-funded, or again, just some vehicle leasing. As I mentioned, this is just showing kind of where we stand last year and this year as far as our overall budget increase with some others in the region or some other comparable peer localities. You know, so as you'll see, we are below, and, and this is this year's, you know, below the increases others are seeing. And, and some of those are large. And that's, you know, what their localities need and the pressures they're facing. And, and so each is unique. You know, so again, just highlighting that we, we do, our, our departments try and get the most out of the dollars we're given and, and be very conservative with our funding. You know, it's, it's, I wouldn't want to see us at the top of this list, but I also wouldn't be too proud if we're always at the bottom. You know, you're going to get what you pay for. And at some point, if we're always the lowest in, in investing in our infrastructure and in our people, again, you're, you're going to get what you pay for. But just wanted to highlight that we, you know, take this seriously and really try and make the most and, and not just come to you with large requests. And the past two years significantly, we've been below where, where some others have been. Similarly, showing where our tax rate stands. For a while there in the 2013, 2019, we were one of the highest, the highest of our comparable peer localities. But over the years have been lowering that tax rate where now you'll see we stand, you know, solidly kind of in the middle or lower middle amongst our peer localities and maintaining that tax rate again for FY25. And this is just a breakdown of budget and expenditures. And we have our finance department here, analysts, myself, happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Powers.
I'd like to make a motion, if it's appropriate at this time, for us to adopt the fiscal year 2025 operating in capital budgets.
I'll second. Any discussion?
I'd like to say something if I could, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Powers.
I've spent a number of hours with department heads that I recognize as making some of the largest increase requests and sat down with each of them for an hour or two. And with the intention of understanding and, and my, and being able to justify in my mind the increases they were asking for. And without any exception, I came away from that time having a deep appreciation for the staff we have and the caliber of people that we have in the county on an operational side. And I, for whatever it's worth, I feel very comfortable with the requests that have been made. Increases are justified in my mind and necessary for the furtherance of the well-being of the citizens of this county. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah. And Mr. Denali?
Again, I just wanted to thank Brett and the staff for all the hard work. And anytime we had a question, they went right to work and got us everything we needed. And we really appreciate that. Thank you.
And I only asked one or two questions, so.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Kenny.
So on the increase to the free clinic, that's just going to automatically happen based on Mr. Powers' motion? We don't have to put anything exception as far as language in the motion or anything like that? That'll all just automatically happen based on the conversations?
Or do you want, I probably proper to amend the motion to make sure that it includes that, just to make sure that's clear.
Okay, good, good. Yeah, I want to make sure that's, that's included.
Do we need to amend the motion then?
He can't amend his motion.
I can't amend my own motion. I don't.
Or, or if it was clear enough that, I mean, I think staff understands that was a good intent.
It's pretty clear.
So that's what Kelly says.
Head nod will do.
Was it as presented in, in your budget, Brett, the, this additional or the free clinic funding? Was it in what you presented?
Nah, nah.
Oh, was that, I think you could amend your motion just to make it clear that this is a, I guess, I don't want to say additional, but be specific.
Yeah, I'd like to amend the motion in, in accepting the FY25 capital and operational budget that we include an increase to the free clinic of $7,500, bringing the total contribution to that organization and to that service to $10,000.
Second. What else? I'd again thank Brett, Charlie, and the whole staff. Nobody knows what we put staff through during budget time, but I appreciate each one of y'all. So, so we need a roll call though.
Mr. Denali?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Kenny?
Aye.
Mrs. Morset?
Aye.
Mr. McCrone?
Aye.
Thank you, Brett.
Thank you.
That brings us to new business. R 2024-33, the Morgan subdivision acceptance.
Hello, Board of Supervisors. Yes, on this particular case, Michael Morgan, and you have the application. So you can see it's very detailed regarding when he inquired with the county, I guess it was in December 2020, regarding subdividing his 5.23 acre lot doing a family subdivision. And a few months after that, there was a, an amendment to the family subdivisions that took it, I believe, in A10. It was two acre for the parent or the residue. And the, and the new parcel would have to be two acres. That's what, that was the old regulations, as I understand. That was amended to five and three. So the residue parent had to be five, and then you would have to be three, unbeknownst to him. So that is the, the reason behind, like I said, he, I think, gave a pretty detailed explanation. The subject property again is a 2841 Huguenot Springs Road. I, I did talk to Supervisor Powers today regarding family subdivisions. And in the various places I've been, you know, communities are really sort of all over the place. Some are very lenient. You know, the, this family tract does not have to necessarily meet the minimum acreage requirement in the underlying zoning district, which in this case, it's A10, it's 10 acres. So I think the county is already being fairly lenient in this guard, in, in this regard. My understanding is that in the past, I guess there have been some abuses in the family subdivision. And they come in, hey, we're, you know, sign an affidavit, we're doing this to our, our, our child. The state code has a very narrow definition who this can go to. As far as children, grandchildren, you know, it doesn't go to cousins and things like that. So you do family subdivision, six months later, our code says you have to hold it for five years unless there's sort of a, some sort of circumstance where, you know, you would need to potentially sell it. But, you know, we don't sit down at the courthouse. So somebody could, you know, six months, a year later, they could potentially, you know, sell the lot. I think an easy solution to that is to simply, on, on the actual plat survey is to stamp to not be sold or transferred and put the actual date in. That would probably, you know, any kind of title work or something like that, somebody would see that and that would kind of raise a red flag. So I think that can be solved. As far as, you know, divisions that happen at the courthouse that we don't know about, we just have to check in with the clerk and make sure that anything that's recorded has the, the county's approval on it. As far as this request, and my general feeling is with, you know, affordability, you know, people, you know, lots have gotten more expensive. This is the one little niche where you can really help people out. I would, I think generally be in favor of, you know, maybe looking at this and reducing it. If, if this proposal right here is something that you're in agreement with, you know, maybe three for the, for the parent and two for the, for the, for the new tract could be a good standard. You know, it was two and two, it's five and three. You're always going to find a situation where someone might come up and be just under, you know, so that, that, you know, you, you said it and then someone comes, hey, I've got 1.75, you know, so. But to me, if you are inclined to approve this, maybe send this to the planning commission and we can look over some scenarios, come back in a couple months and maybe present something to you that potentially could, could amend this, maybe make it a little more lenient. And, and again, make sure that we are, you know, people aren't just taking it and selling it. And making sure that we, you know, literally create a stamp that would be very clear that it's not to be subdivided.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Denali.
Mr. Webb, do you have an idea how we can fix this? If we're looking at, as a board, if we decide to reduce this to two and two or two and three versus the current three and five? Do you have an idea of, of, of how simple this process could be or?
I mean.
How rigorous?
Very simple.
Okay.
I mean, very simple. I mean, just, I, I would say probably wouldn't have, we wouldn't review it this month at the planning commission, but maybe at the June, review it. It probably would literally be maybe a 20, 30 minute conversation and get a feel from them. Again, I'm just sort of leaning toward a three and two as, as maybe a good number. But it's really just sort of up to what you think is the best. And simply amending the, the subdivision ordinance, I mean, that's, that's, again, planning commission would hear it, make a recommendation and, and have a hearing here at the, at the board. So, I mean, it could definitely be amended within 90 days. And I do stress, I, I do believe that niche of helping families is, is, is a big plus. I've, you know, been in communities that don't really make, don't really give any extra benefits to family. Still got to be the same lot size. Still have to be number of on a private drive, a private road, can't exceed. But I've been to others where they don't even consider them subdivisions almost. And minimum of an acre. Doesn't matter if it's on a, you know, the X-Men lot on a private drive. So it's, it varies. I think this would be a good in-between. Yeah.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Denali.
I'd, I'd like to make a motion to accept the request with the intent to change the, the ordinance to three and two, if that's the will of the majority of the board.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
I do have one question. Does the property owner here? How you doing, sir?
Fine, thank you.
Sorry about your daughter's health issues. I just have one question. So I assume you're going to extend the existing driveway to the rear parcel, either as a private road or an easement. So if by chance in the future, you wanted to sell that two acre tract, that whoever bought it would be able to access it without any issues?
That is our intent, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
I, any other questions, I'd be happy to answer.
That's, that was it, sir. Thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman, I, I would certainly support moving, moving ahead with this. And reading the application and talking with Ms. Kemp, the, we, policy allows us within categories to make exceptions to these sorts of things if there's a hardship or other issue that's, that comes, comes to the table. And, and I think we have that in this situation. I'm also, but, but on the other hand, I, you know, you, you start setting precedents and, and you start in, getting yourself in situations where other folks are going to come forward and expect the same thing. I, I'm very much in favor of voting in affirmative for this tonight, but with the understanding that we will send this to Mr. Webb and, and to his staff, and then in turn to the planning commission to come back to make recommendation and to staff, obviously, but to, to make recommendation to us to change that ordinance so that we don't, we, we get the ordinance straight. So, so we don't have to go through these exception processes in the future.
I agree with you, sir. I would, I don't want to open up a can of worms, like if somebody is going to bring more cases. But being the case that it will go back before the planning commission, I would like to see it go back to the old standard also. So hopefully the planning commission will, will do that and we could move forward there. So we've had a motion, we've had a second. Any more comments? Roll call.
Mr. Denali?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Kenny?
Aye.
Mrs. Morset?
Aye.
Mr. McCrone?
Aye.
That brings us to B, our court appeal, Solomon's Creek Solar District Number Three.
Yes, this is a, as you're aware, the conditional use permit, Sun Tribe has applied for a conditional use permit for a solar facility on 152 acre parcel, which of, which of 30 acres more or less would be occupied by solar panels themselves, located on Maiden Roads, about, about two miles north from Route 60. The, the state code states that solar facilities must prove, make a, you know, make an appeal that they are in substantial compliance to a community's comprehensive plan. At the last meeting in the planning commission, the planning commission determined, I believe the vote was four to one, and it is in my report, that it did not, that this particular project did not. If the board were to rule, would, would, would vote in the same manner, then that would mean that the applicant would not be moving forward with the conditional use, use permit. As far as the comprehensive plan, I think the applicant, if you look in the packet, you'll see, I think they've made a pretty good case. On page 86, there was page 86 of the comp plan, really, that's that. On page 86, there is, page 86 of the comp plan, really, that's that, that one page is dedicated to solar. You know, two of the things that really kind of stood out to me was proximity to major thoroughfare. And that's definitely the case here with Maiden's Road, screening and buffering. I think it has really, really good screening and buffering. I think sort of, you know, you're being asked to, you know, is this in compliance with the comprehensive plan? And also, you know, this is considered a rural area in the comp plan for the long range plan, and rural areas, solar energy farms may be appropriate within rural areas. So we don't have a real, it might. So I still think it kind of comes down to, even when you consider your look at the comprehensive plan, does this, is it important to the comprehensive plan? I think it's kind of hard to maybe, you know, separate your feelings to the project in general. So in that case, you know, staff, again, I do believe it would be, it would be, but it by no means means if it goes forward that that's going to necessarily mean that a conditional use permit will be granted. Other than that, that is sort of my view on this. Any questions for me about it, or?
Good, Mr. Powers.
Mr. Webb, don't mean to put you on the spot. I would, if you can, make a definitive statement. Is it or is it not in compliance with the comprehensive plan?
I mean, I believe the two things that really stand out to me, the proximity to major thoroughfare and the screening and buffering. So I would believe that it would be.
Would be.
It would be. But again, I want to sort of say that that, you know, that's just one piece of this. It would just then, it would just mean that the CUP would move forward, go back to the planning commission where it would be evaluated for all the different conditions and whatnot that are in the CUP.
If I could, just to clarify, so everyone understands, what we would be voting on tonight is the appeal. We are not approving the project.
That's correct.
If we, if we vote the appeal to move forward, then this would come back before the planning commission again, could be discussed, debated, and come back to us probably in the July timeframe?
I think that's correct.
The July timeframe? That's correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I'm sure the applicant's going to maybe give some details about the application itself, but it's in my district, so if I could, the chairman's permission, I have gone out on that property numerous times, walked it both with two of the adjoining property owners and with Sun Tribe. And we went out there and talked about, it was in the winter, it was in the wintertime, so there were no leaves on the trees, obviously. But we went out on the site at one of the property owners' intersections of a corner of their property, and we walked off 100 feet. And I could still see the the young lady at the other end of the tape. And so I said, well, let's go out another 100 feet. And she did. And I could barely see her. And so I asked Sun Tribe, in this case, whether they would agree to that additional 100 feet, so a total of 200 feet. And they said they would, and have, and have submitted documents and a site plan to concur with that. I also asked them if around, and that's, that's that 100, extra 100 feet around the entire property. And I also asked them if they would do additional evergreen type plantings around that entire fence with a five-year to 12 feet type of, type of growth pattern, and they agreed to that also. I'm reminded of the fact that there's 100 and what, 150 acres? What did you say?
152, I believe.
152. And that we're talking about roughly 30, 36 acres of property that would be devoted to the solar facility. I don't see how it could possibly be seen from 522. But in, I suspect that it might be, it might be visible to the two property owners. One of their homes that, when we stand on their properties, property corner there, I could look back and see the house. But add another 200 feet to that with undisturbed area. All the trees that are there now would stay there. It would, it would be difficult to see those particular homes. So I just wanted to put that out on the record, just to be clear about what we're talking about here. I personally would hope that the board would support at least sending this back to the planning commission so additional conversation could be had. And I believe that there were some assumptions made at the planning commission, and I have gone back and looked at the video of that meeting where there were some statements made or assumptions made that if someone had read the 600 and some odd pages in the permit application, some of those questions could have been answered in terms of some of the steps that the applicant has gone through. I just want, I would welcome an opportunity for us to debate that further and to treat the applicant in this situation as fairly as possible. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Powers.
Mr. Chairman.
Good, Mr. Kenny.
So I'll be honest with you, you know, when Mr. Hatcher brought up the point that it didn't really fit with the comprehensive plan, I kind of thought he was stretching things a little. Till I went back and looked at the comprehensive plan myself. The whole comprehensive plan is designed around protecting the rural character of the county. So when you do a word search in the comprehensive plan, there are 33 references to rural character. There's only 10 to solar, and they're all on one page. There's still a lot of questions, and also if you look at our ordinances regarding zoning, general purpose and rural-based districts, one is it encourages lands containing perennial stream corridors, floodplains, wetlands, steep slopes to be left in a naturalized, undisturbed state. And looking at the plat of this property, there is definitely a stream running through the center of the property. So not only do I not concur that it follows the comprehensive plan, but it also detracts from general purpose of the rural-based districts. I also have other questions that don't necessarily pertain to the comprehensive plan, that more with the applicant and who the project owner would be, which we still don't know. They won't know till the project's completed. Would that person be reputable? Would they not be reputable? That's not a question they can answer, even after they start the project. So I have a big concern there. But again, back to the planning commission's point, their whole premise for rejecting the CUP was that it did not allow or did not follow the theme of the comprehensive plan, and I have to agree with that assessment.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
I'd like to ask a question if I could, Mr. Chairman.
Good, Mr. Powers.
To Mr. Kenny's point, acknowledging that there are, absolutely are streams that run through that property. But I, if I'm not, I believe I'm correct, that those streams and the necessary buffering is in the site plan and would be protected.
That's correct.
One other point I'd like to make is there are a number of other uses in A-10 that are far more intensive than what's proposed. And for those of us who are concerned about deforestation or taking trees out of, out of, out of the out of the population, is that that property owner could by right, take every tree down and build 12 homes on 10 acres, 10 acre lots, which would have a significantly different level of impact on fire, rescue, traffic, and schools, potentially. I think we need, we sometimes miss or don't factor as much as I think we should. The other uses that are allowed in A-10, which are far more intensive, and to Mr. Kenny's point, those additional, that higher level of intensity might run counter to the rural character that he's alluding to. Just a point. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. I was the original, I was on the original board last year, and our November meeting, there was a comment made that at our next meeting, we would put a moratorium on solar farms in Powhatan. That would, that would have been a 5-0 vote if we'd have voted that night. But because of the Solomon Project, we, that was the only one that was sent forward. And it was also, they left it up to the new board. So the new board is here now. So I will not be supporting it, because I was part of the original 5-0 vote, and it wasn't a formal vote, but, you know, we had a pretty much agreement about it, but so I guess it's up to the board if they're going to send it back to the planning commission. Like I said, we're not approving it tonight. We're just sending it back for the planning commission to review everything. So that's all I got. Any more comments?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make, unless the applicant would like to. That's, that's up to the chairman.
Please, sir.
So to your, to the point, though, from what Mr. Webb was saying, I thought if we found in favor the same that the planning commission, that it dies. It doesn't go back to them unless we override the planning commission's recommendation, correct?
To the appeal, yeah.
So if we uphold the appeal of the planning commission, the project dies today?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am? Okay, thank you.
That is correct.
Yeah.
Is it okay? Okay.
Thank you all for allowing me to speak. My name is Bobby Jost. I'm an associate project developer at at Sun Tribe Development. We're based in Charlottesville. I just want to speak to the project conformance to the comprehensive plan. The project is located in A-10 zoning in rural areas for the future land use designation. There have been five projects previously permitted in the county, all have the same zoning and land use designation. So there's some precedent for our project to conform to 2232. Our project is significantly smaller than any of those other projects. If if approved, it would add, it would encompass two hundredths of a percent of the county's total land area. So it's very insignificant, least size project. There are six guidelines for solar in rural areas in the comprehensive plan. Our project, it conforms to all of them. I believe solar is the only land use that has this sort of guidance, and we need every single specific item outlined in the comprehensive plan as far as the guidance goes. So there's a, the first is an acreage cap at 30 acre size, we're much smaller than the 500 acres is recommended less than in the, in the comprehensive plan. The second is adjacency to major thoroughfares. As Mr. Webb outlined, we're off of 522, about two miles north of the Route 65 22 intersection, so we're off of a main thoroughfare. The third is screening and buffering. As Supervisor Powers outlined, we've taken significant time and effort to make sure that the project is is appropriately screened from public right of ways and neighbors. We've spent the better part of the last two years talking with stakeholders and with the county and neighbors to make sure that this project, you know, not only fits with the county, but is appropriate for its location in the A-10 district and in the rural areas designation. The fourth is that it conforms to natural resource requirements, protecting natural resources, which is important to us. We've included 200-foot riparian buffers around county protected streams. The project incorporates all of the guidance in the Virginia Department of Wildlife Solar Guidance. We've done an extensive third-party environmental evaluation that didn't identify any critical environmental resources on the site, and we plan to incorporate native pollinators and a wildlife corridor through the center of the project, which is unencumbered for wildlife to travel through. The fifth is that it protects cultural resources. We did another extensive study of Virginia Cultural Resource Information System databases. There are no eligible architectural or archaeological resources located on or adjacent to the site. And regardless, our project is designed to not be, not to be visible from neighbors or surrounding right of way. So in any case, it wouldn't be visible from any cultural or historic resources. And then finally, the project conforms to the prohibition of toxic materials. We will commit to not using panels containing cadmium or cadex or Gen X as outlined in the comprehensive plan. So to kind of summarize, our project conforms to all the guidelines outlined in the long-term comprehensive plan for solar in rural areas. We have the same designation and long-term land use as all the other permitted projects previously in the county. Our project is adjacent to a major thoroughfare. It's well-designed and screened. The project evaluated and considers mitigation for impacts to any natural resources. Our project would be a good long-term neighbor with little traffic, no noise, no light, and again, won't be visible. And then our project provides pretty significant revenue to the county for its 30 acre footprint, over 38 times what would come from the parcel if it were in its current land use. It provides enough revenue in one year than the parcel would provide to the county in 40 years of operation if it were to stay in its current land use. So I appreciate you allowing me to come up to speak. Before I go, I'd like to give my land use attorney a few minutes just to talk about the 2232 process, if that's okay?
That's okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board of Supervisors. I'm Karen Cohen. I'm a partner in the Land Use and Renewable Energy Practice at Gentry Lock in Richmond, and I represent the applicant Sun Tribe, who is the petitioner in this appeal. And we are asking the board to overrule the planning commission's 2232 determination because the project, as proposed, meets every element of the comprehensive plan with respect to solar energy facilities, as Mr. Jost just demonstrated. From a legal perspective, it's our view that this is a clear-cut case, but I do want to address what led to, what we think led to a different outcome from the planning commission. And before I do that, I mean, let me say, though, that we do recognize the dedication and you know, and the time and energy put in by those who are serving on the planning commission and this board. And they're being asked in these solar cases to apply laws like 15.2 2232 that are not always the easiest to interpret and apply. So please know that we are appreciative of the commission's time and dedication. We're just asking that the board fairly look at this, fairly apply the law, and correct the error. So just very generally about 2232, I know probably the board's aware, but sometimes this is helpful since some of the public is here to to hear what it's all about, so I'll be brief. But the 2232 review, as it's known, because it comes from the code 15.2 2232, sometimes it's called a public facilities review, or PFR, or an SIA substantially in accord. It's the alphabet soup of land use law. But the reason it's called a public facilities review is that it only pertains to public facilities, right? It doesn't pertain to other types of development, which is maybe why we struggle with it a little, because it doesn't come up in every other type of case. So for example, when this board has issued other CUPs, other conditional use permits, like, I don't know, say like for a private childcare facility or something like that, as you know, you don't go through the 2232 review for that. But solar, even when it's built by a private developer, is providing electricity to the grid for the utility provider to provide electricity to the public. So that's why solar needs to go through public facility review, or PFR, 2232. It's not just things like utilities, even a public school, for example. If its general location is not something that's already shown on the comprehensive plan, that would have to go through a 2232 review. So the rationale for that is that, you know, people should be able to come and look at the locality's comprehensive plan and understand kind of where various public facilities are planned for the future. So say you're buying property to build a home or operate a business, you would want to know if the county has plans in that general area for a public school, or a public park, or a county recycling center, or an electrical substation, or some other type of public facility. And before you buy that parcel, you want to be able to take a look at the comp plan and and see what future public facilities are planned there. So that, that kind of makes sense. So that's why the statute says that where the feature So that's why the statute says that where the feature, unless the feature is already shown on the comprehensive plan, then there's a 2232 review. But where it's not something that's already shown on there, the state code tells the planning commission, hey, take a look at this proposed public facility. We need you to look, it's not already shown on the plan, so look at the comprehensive plan and see if this is the kind of thing that, whose general or approximate location, character, and extent is substantially in accord with the comprehensive plan or part thereof. I'm quoting the statute to you. So it doesn't need to be consistent fully with the entire plan. It, and it can be a page, it doesn't matter how many pages. In your plan, it so happens that the solar relevant portion and the guidance for solar is on that page, but that is the right part for you to be looking at. So solar, you know, is relatively new-ish, so not every locality has actually added solar sighting guidance to their comprehensive plans, but Powhatan County has, which is great. So that's the part that pertains here. So in the comp plan, it's clear that solar energy facilities are allowed in the rural area. It contemplates this. It says solar facilities are likely to cite on these areas in the rural area, but to ensure compatibility with the rural landscape, it says, certain sighting and design conditions should be met. And then it lists what those are. And as Mr. Jost explained, the proposed project satisfies all those conditions. And then the county zoning ordinance, zoning is what implements the comprehensive plan. Your zoning ordinance says that, all, most every zoning ordinance in Virginia says that. The zoning ordinance implements the comprehensive plan, and your zoning ordinance specifically says that solar is allowed in, among other places, A-10, a rural district that is described as, quote, "agrarian and low-density rural character." Again, subject to meeting certain conditions, of course, and subject to issuance of a conditional use permit in which you can impose further conditions as needed. So planning staff correctly advised in its report that the project meets the comprehensive plan elements and that it is in substantial accord. And in fact, most of the public who spoke at the planning commission meeting, you know, they kind of said, well, we prefer solar over housing or more intense development because in their view, the solar was more compatible with the rural character. But the chair, um, did raise the concern that the zoning ordinance lacks robust standards in the ordinance. And another commissioner said, well, you know, when is this going to stop? Um, she was worried that if you approve this project, or if you approve any project, that you'll have to keep approving projects and then the county will be, you know, covered in solar panels. But as Mr. Jost explained, there's only a fraction of the county that's in solar now, and this point or two one-hundredths of a percent is not going to tip the scale here. Nevertheless, I'm not undermining that concern, but if there's that concern, then the commission and this board, or this board, may impose reasonable criteria. That's what the state law says, that you may impose reasonable criteria on solar sighting. And so you can always initiate an appropriate text amendment to address their concerns. Um, but for now, for now though, applicant's project must be evaluated under the comprehensive plan as it is today. That doesn't preclude you from taking other action to, to deal with very real concerns and real policy issues. Um, so the question isn't whether solar is or is not compatible with the rural area. That question's already been answered by the governing body of this locality. The comprehensive plan says it's been, uh, that it is compatible with the rural area subject to certain conditions. So, you know, just to take one of them, for example, set for sub-project size, it says to help these projects blend into the rural landscape, each solar energy farm should be less than 500 acres in area. And again, this project's far less than that, um, and its staff says this is a compelling case. So really, what it comes down to is just that the law must be applied fairly. It must be applied fairly. The commission's duty in the 2232 review is to analyze the project under the existing applicable comprehensive plan that has been approved and adopted by the governing body of the locality. Um, so Commissioner Winehall actually understood this. She properly looked at the plan's guiding criteria for solar in the rural area, and she found that the project met all the elements. And before she made the motion, that it is in substantial accord with the comprehensive plan, she didn't get a second, and an opposing motion was made and carried. Um, and, but one commissioner frankly acknowledged that the commission had previously tried to initiate an amendment to ban solar in the rural areas, but the ban was not approved by the board. That doesn't mean you can't do other things. Like I said, you can initiate a text amendment, you can address the concerns, but while we appreciate that there are some commissioners and maybe some board members too, who strongly believe that the plan should be changed or that solar should be banned in the rural area, the law must mean something too. The, and the commission and this board must fairly interpret the plan as it is now and must apply the law as it is now, not as they would prefer it to be. And, and it's not fair to hold this applicant to a different standard than the other five previously approved projects. So for county officials looking at this 2232 issue, I know it's not easy, but it's the duty of the county officials to uphold the law and apply it fairly to everyone who comes before them. Um, so correcting the error in this case, um, as was discussed, the, the project will come back, the project will be fully vetted, there'll be a chance for additional conditions, um, if needed, and that kind of thing. But for now, this is the law, and the law has to be applied. So correcting the error is both a matter of law and fairness to the applicant. And respectfully, that is why we are asking you to overrule the planning commission. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Powers.
I'd like to make one more point that I think unfortunately is very seldom discussed in these deliberations, and that is the notion of property rights. The owners of this parcel, um, have the right to use that parcel as, as they see fit, so long as it's compliant with comprehensive plan and our zoning requirements. And insofar as we have concerns, this is a whole nature of a conditional use permit, we can impose additional conditions, which we certainly have in terms of buffering and undisturbed areas and such as that. Um, I, I just find it difficult for me to, um, as an elected person, to tell a property owner that they can't use their property for what they intend to use it for. Not our right. Absolutely not our right. Um, that's why we have condition, this is a conditional use situation, and we can impose those additional requirements to mitigate any potential externalities to the surrounding property owners. And I think we, we have done that, and we could do more. We could do more. So I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair.
Good, Ms. Morsette.
Can I make a motion that it not go back to planning?
I certainly can.
Would you like to make that motion?
Do I hear a second?
See, your motion Denise is to uphold the recommendation of the planning commission.
That it not go back to planning.
Right, so if you uphold that, it won't go back, it dies here.
Any more discussion?
Roll call.
Roll call.
Mr. Deni?
No.
Mr. Powers?
Let me be clear what I, no. Send it back to the planning commission. I vote no.
Mr. Kenny?
Aye.
Mrs. Morsette?
Aye.
Mr. McClung?
So they just make sure that's a three-two vote, and it would, uh, confirm the planning commissions, uh, that it's not, uh, in conjunction with the comprehensive?
We're holding, upholding the planning commissions.
Okay.
Backing our planning commission.
The appeal is denied.
Gotcha, thank you.
It brings us to our first public hearing period. Um, our first one is O-2024-08 AFD, St. Fer District Five. Would anybody like to, from the public, like to comment before we go any further on this
All right, so this is a request for parcels, uh, five dash thirty-four and five dash thirty-four B, known as fifty-three oh-nine and fifty-three thirty-five Cartersville Road, to join an already existing AFD known as Kingsland Bluff. Uh, it would be approximately forty point six-three-six acres, joining, um, an already existing three hundred and seventy-one point seven-nine acres within the core AFD. The, uh, future land use plan has the area listed as rural areas, and the property is non-lan use. Um, the proposal is recommended by staff in the AFD committee. Uh, Mr. Riley's here from the AFD committee and would like to speak on this.
Good evening, I'm Bob Riley. I'm a member of the Agricultural and Forestry District Advisory Committee. Uh, the committee unanimously recommends that these parcels be added to Kingsland Bluff AFD as shown, as indicated. Uh, I've got a, a, a slide here that I think is of some interest to you. Hopefully all of you will see that. Yep. Uh, the two candidate parcels are in yellow there. There's a O-five dash three-four label on it, which is the, uh, property ID on the thirty-acre parcel, the ten-acre parcel's a smaller strip to the west. Uh, it's an interesting location, uh, of this particular parcel. Uh, and so you're looking in the area there that is circled in red, that's what I want you to focus on. Uh, you'll see above in kind of a purple, uh, background, that is all permanent conservation easement incorporates the, uh, conservation easement of what was the Belmead property and a little bit extended to the west. It's about seventeen hundred acres, uh, all along the James River, and the green-hatched area are the priority conservation areas in the comprehensive plan and in Matt, in map three of the comprehensive plan, uh, where we're, where the county is, is charged with, uh, providing, uh, special supervision and protection of wildlife habitat and corridor characteristics. That entire rundown there from the, from the James River through the conservation easements, coming on down in the hatch green areas, through the, through the four thousand-plus acre wildlife management area and on south all the way to the Appomattox River, that is Powhatan's great north-south corridor, and the only one that we have that connects to James, the Appomattox River as a major corridor. Uh, and, and that's why anything in there is going to get a lot of attention, as, as the comprehensive plan says that it, that of course should. Uh, now what's your, what you're seeing in the circled area there is a solar farm. And it's a solar farm that was, uh, first go-around of that some years ago was knocked down pretty, pretty handily, five to zero at the board. Uh, this came back, was redone, this one got through, this is several years ago. Uh, but among the things that happened in that, uh, in that solar facility was that they had proffered, uh, some wildlife corridors, uh, through the property, uh, primarily along intermittent creeks, as would be, no surprise, and feeding into, uh, major tributary of Deep Creek, which is one of the largest creeks in the county, ultimately feed, openly as a tributary into the James. Uh, and Sally Creek, which comes up on the east side there above the Powhatan Wildlife Management Area, uh, joins Deep Creek and then before heads on into the James River. Uh, so you'll notice that the interesting location of this property is, that little wedge there comes directly into one of those sort of light-shaded blue, uh, corridors. Those are the corridors that were in part of the conditions of, uh, that, that solar farm being, that solar facility being approved. Uh, so the properties, their preservation, preservation especially, that, that recognition, puts them in a very nice position to feed as an extension corridor of the wildlife corridor that's through that, uh, solar facility and goes straight on down into undeveloped land and then makes easy access into the major north-south corridor of the county. So it's a very remarkable location for that particular set of property, and it, and that in and of itself, uh, to us, makes it pretty special by helping to guarantee and shore up that particular corridor. Uh, and, uh, you know, the, 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 it's, it's hard to overemphasize the importance of being able to provide the wildlife, that character off of the James River and that border along there as it gets into the major corridor and heads south toward the Appomattox. Uh, so that's the principal thing we want to show about the property. Uh, other than that, uh, you know, it's the, there's no intent to develop that, that the intent's to remain rural, and of course, this by going into the AFD, the, the, uh, landowners have agreed to, uh, lock this up for 10 years, uh, without additional development on their own accord. Uh, so once again, to be emphasized, that decisions that are taken, uh, to provide land use taxation in particular parcels, well, there's certainly no intent at this point on the, on the smaller one. The larger one, I think, meets the land use parcel designation, may already have an application in at that point. But those are, those are in no way, uh, uh, related to, uh, the formation of the AFD or to move a parcel into an AFD. They are directly decisions that get taken by the Commissioner of Revenue for the county under state law. And he has to apply what is in state law and what's clearly indicated in the, you know, in the, uh, Agricultural and Forestry District AFQ that we, uh, FAQ that, that we had and was, you know, approved by the county and agreed to be, uh, consistent with county policy by Tom, by, no, deceased Tom, Tom Lachey. But the, uh, were these parcels, or they said that larger parcel decide to go into, uh, or to try to get land use taxation, it would have to meet those state requirements. And in no part of those state requirements is that you're in an AFD and therefore you get land use taxation. That's not what happens at all. It's got to be done by the Commissioner of Revenue applying those characteristics. And that's out of, out of the hands of any of the, the rest of us, whether or not he grants that. And he's got to meet that. And right now, it's my understanding is the ten hundred parcel does not meet it and will not receive. So that, just, just some clarification. But again, as far as adding that into an AFD and the existing Kingsland Bluff there, uh, from our standpoint, this, this property is peculiarly positioned, uh, to be an important, important piece of thing. Now, I'm happy to ask any, answer any questions on that you, that y'all might have.
Mr. Chairman.
Good, Ms. Powers.
Just.
Yes, sir.
Evidently, there's no requirement for this parcel or any parcel to be included in the core AFD to be coterminous to it.
No, has to be, but, uh, Supervisor Powers, it has to be within one mile of the border or contiguous to a parcel whose closest border is within a mile. And this is, this is well within a mile, it's about a third of a mile.
It's about how far?
I think it's about a third of a mile away from that, from that border. It's, it's not, it's all.
So that's the condition for, if it's not coterminous to the core?
Yes.
Okay. I was wondering, because it kind of hung out there.
Well, you, you, and you've got a fair amount, and that's in, by purpose, and, and what happens is when you add a parcel that's say, you know, one mile removed or, you know, or less, uh, it, especially the possibility that, that that's going to encourage some infill, you know, and strengthen the, the core. And if you ever get to the day where the intervening properties go in, and we've had that happen, where they go into the core, now the core is expanded because it's all consistent contiguous properties. Uh, and that can be very important. I don't, I don't think we expect that this particular one here is going to fill all the way to the Kingsland Bluff, as far as I know, when there's no, no discussion about that. But sometimes that's a key thing. Uh, certainly, for example, along the Appomattox River, uh, that, that's a key, a key, a key principle. And it would certainly be also along the James River or any of the, totally the major creeks, to have that capability, uh, is a real asset to, you know, protection of rural characters.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Any other question?
Good.
Good.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead, Ms. Morsette.
I'd like to make a motion to approve and the added to the already established Kingsland Bluff Agricultural Forestry District, um, two zero two-four dash zero eight.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Deni?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Kenny?
Aye.
Mrs. Morsette?
Aye.
Mr. McClung?
Aye.
It brings us to our second. It brings us to our second public hearing. Zero dash two oh two four dash oh nine AFD Maple Swamp Creek.
Alright, so this is a request for parcel twenty-two dash twelve, known as twenty-four thirty-seven Ballsville Road. This would create a, a new AFD known as Maple Swamp Creek. The parcel is approximately three hundred and twenty-five point three five acres. The Future Land Use Plan has it listed as rural areas and natural conservation, and the property is in land use. The proposal is recommended by staff in the AFD Committee, and would you like to speak on this one as well?
I think you've got a map there that's attached to the, to the application and probably answers this, the picture pretty well. We don't need more of this. This is a very close up against the, very close to the Cumberland line. Maple Swamp Creek is maybe a creek that is somewhat less known. It's way out there at the county. It goes both in and out of Cumberland County and all the, dumps into the James River. But the, that is, that is the, the back border of the property is Maple, Maple Swamp Creek proper. Going through the property, there are two intermittent streams, one of which is falls ultimately into the other, and then that one feeds directly into Maple Swamp Creek. And the property owned, this is an active forestry parcel. It's right now, as you, I think you can roughly see out of the, what the Planning Commission has given you on that, on your, on your application there, that the, it's not been very long since the property was timbered. Throughout most of the back portion up of the property, there is a, an older timber section to the front that has been replanted in pines. And so, you know, active forestry certainly is right within the, the wheelhouse of what the, of what the, the AFD program is all about. And the applicant here is certainly engaging in that and good practices and maintaining the buffers about the, about the intermittent stream. And again, now, this, this happens to be one, the three hundred and twenty-five acres. That is the only one that's out there in that area that's going to be new. And therefore, the ability to add additional parcels, and there are large parcels, both north and south of this property. Whether those individuals are interested in that or not, that's certainly something we look at and be happy to advise them all and go out and walk the property and see what they have. But I think that this is a, this is, it would be a major new agricultural and forestal district. And, and I think there's a fair amount of promise in being able to extend rural protection out there, that, that far edge of the, our side of the county that we do currently without. So, and again, other than that, I'm happy to ask, answer any questions on it that you may have.
I think we're good.
Thank you very much.
Anyone in the public like to speak on this public hearing? With the Maple Swamp Creek. Not seen anyone.
Mr. Chair.
Good, Ms. Morsette.
I would like to make a motion on twenty twenty-four dash zero nine for Maple Swamp Creek in District Five to be a, added as a new agricultural forestal district.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Denali.
Aye.
Mr. Powers.
Aye.
Mr. Kenny.
Aye.
Mrs. Morsette.
Aye.
Mr. McLown.
Aye.
It brings us to C, O dash two oh two four dash ten Creek Single Lot, District One.
Alright, so this is one of the South Creek rezonings. The, the first one is a request to rezone parcel forty-two dash seven eight three from General Commercial to Commerce Center. The parcel is approximately four point seven zero two acres and is located at the southeast end of Carter Galler Boulevard. They've agreed to continue to keep all previous proffers in effect from the past, which includes prohibiting any tattoo parlors, pawn shops, check cashing facilities such as payday loans, but not banks, and prohibits any commercial kennels on the property. The Future Land Use Plan recommends a property for gateway business. Staff recommends the application for approval, given that it updates the property to the more current commercial, sorry, Commerce Center zoning and is compatible with surrounding properties and fits in with comprehensive plan.
Thank you, sir. This will be public comment period now for this public hearing. Third dash two oh four dash John Carl Schwendeman.
Hello, my name is Carl Schwendeman. Could Palatine County add a new proffer or update the ordinance for this property to include that the future business build a new sidewalk along Carter Boulevard? Because currently Carter Boulevard has curbs, gutters, and storm drains. And they could just ask that, that any new business that moves onto the property, like when the property is sold and a developer comes to build the parking lots and the new build, the office building or the business, that they just build like a five foot wide sidewalk along Carter Road? Because this developer currently owns over seventy-five percent of the land along Carter Boulevard, between the high school and Food Lion. And this would be a great chance to update this twenty-year-old zoning, the twenty-year-old proffers and zonings to state of the, to, to something more state of the art, where they just ask them to build sidewalks, a section of sidewalk, sidewalk along Carter Boulevard, where the sidewalks to be built over a couple of years, where they're, where they snap together like a giant Lego set.
Thank you, Carl. Board comments?
Question? Oh, go ahead.
No, you go ahead, sir.
Go ahead, Ms. Powers.
What's, what's the, it's probably inherent, just can't find it. What's the setback off of Carter Galler for that parcel?
I'll let Brett answer that.
Yeah, it's a front yard, so it's going to be twenty-five feet.
Is, is that standard?
Since it's, you know, essentially an industrial park or a business park, it would be. If it was, if it was along Route sixty or somewhere, we have a corridor, we want more buffers and separation, it would be greater, but being internal to a business park or, you know, our ordinance and general planning would be more comfortable with the buildings coming closer to the road.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Powers. Go ahead, Mr. Denali.
I'm going to make a motion to approve this lot to go from General Commercial to Commerce Center for the gateway business.
Roll call.
Mr. Denali.
Aye.
Mr. Powers.
Aye.
Mr. Kenny.
Aye.
Mrs. Morsette.
Aye.
Mr. McLown.
Aye.
Things, brings us to our last public hearing. Zero dash two oh four dash eleven, South Creek District One.
Alright, so, so this is for the second South Creek rezoning. This one is for parcels forty-two E dash one dash eight, forty-two E dash four dash twenty, forty-two E dash four dash nineteen, forty-two E dash four dash eighteen, forty-two E dash four dash twenty-one, forty-two E dash four dash twenty-two, and forty-two dash seven eight two. These are to be rezoned from General Commercial to Light Industrial. This is approximately nineteen point seven, six, nine acres. The Future Land Use Plan has most of the properties as industrial, except for the property below Carter Galler, which is listed as gateway business. The proposed uses would be those permitted by right in Light Industrial, including office, warehouse, and self-service storage. As with the other case, the proffers would remain, remain the same from their previous rezoning cases. And staff and the Planning Commission have recommended approval for this rezoning.
Mr. Schwendeman, you signed up to speak.
This is the big part of Carter Carter Road that runs from Carter Road, running from the old church road in, in Carter to the Food Lion. This would be a, a good place to add a side, to ask them to build side, to ask the future, develop the future business owners to build sections of sidewalk along Carter Boulevard. Because if they extend Carter Boulevard to Walmart, then that would make a great pedestrian, alternate pedestrian route than walking along Route sixty. And the office park does have low speed limits in it, below thirty-five miles an hour. And it would be a great place to establish a new sidewalk system for the county.
Thank you, Carl. Anyone else? Board comments?
Chairman.
Good, Ms. Powers.
On page three twenty-nine of the packet, under Statement of Proffer Number Seventeen, I'm just curious, the fifty-foot front parking setback reduced to twenty-five feet. That, what, what was the rationale for, for, for changing that?
And those, so these proffers carried over from when the property was originally zoned, many, many years ago, two thousand and three? At that time, I think the zoning ordinance may have been different, where it was fifty foot. So they, they wanted to reduce it. I couldn't speak to why. But since that time, we, we've changed our ordinances. So this really wouldn't apply, or this would be redundant, because I believe, unless I'm mistaken, the setback already is twenty-five feet for the new zoning.
So this just makes it conforming to what it is today?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Powers.
Thank you, Chairman.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Denali.
I'll make a motion to change this to Light Industrial, so that it's compatible with the rest of the surrounding area.
One second.
Roll call.
Mr. Denali.
Aye.
Mr. Powers.
Aye.
Mr. Kenny.
Aye.
Mrs. Morsette.
Aye.
Mr. McLown.
Aye.
Brings us to our last public comment period of the night. No one has signed up, so I will close public comment up. Good, Mr. Anderson.
David Anderson, twenty-three sixty-six Belcross Circle, Palatine. Just like to make a comment about the solar proposal that was on the table tonight. I don't know whether the location was appropriate for a solar farm or not. I don't have any stake into whether we would approve that in the future or would not. I would like the board to recognize the fact that I believe the decision you made tonight is not about whether it was a good place for a solar farmer, but whether it was in compliance with the comprehensive plan. And to me, it clearly was in compliance with the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan is a guide. It's what the first page of the comprehensive plan says. So that means it's full of gray, basically. One of the places that the comprehensive plan is not gray, but black and white, is the three quarters of a page in the plan that talks about solar farms. And I thought the applicant tonight laid out point by point why it was in compliance with the comprehensive plan. And what I think the board sent the message tonight to the business community, which I think is detrimental to the county, is we told the business community that you can come into our county, you can follow our guidance, you can spend two years working with the county, you can probably spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to do that, and then we're going to make an arbitrary decision to tell you to go home. And I don't think we need to tell the business community to go home. If we don't want a particular business in the county, we ought to tell them that on day one. We ought not to tell them that after two years of working and trying to develop a business in the county. Palatine County has historically had a difficult relationship with the business community. I know firsthand regional and national developers that have told me Palatine is difficult to work with. I think tonight you reinforced that message. And I would just ask the board to think about that as you move forward and think about how we can be more welcoming to the business community as we do move forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Close the second public comment period. County Attorney comments?
I, I don't have any other than, um, thank you for being gracious with me and catching up. And I appreciate all the warm thoughts and emails from staff and the board. Thank you.
Thank you. County Minister comments?
No other comments.
Board comments?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Denali.
Just wanted to, uh, not necessarily piggyback on, on Mr. Anderson's comments earlier, but I do want to make sure that I had a moment to explain my no vote. I wasn't voting in favor or denying solar farms. I was voting on whether to provide clarity to an appeal. That's what I voted on. I believe that their, the information that they brought, brought forward was very, very clear on why the appeal should have been overturned and sent back to the Planning Commission. So my vote was not in favor or to deny a solar farm in general. It was just in favor of their appeal. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Good, Ms. Powers.
I could, I, I concur with Mr. Denali's statement. I'm, I'm not an advocate for solar facilities myself. Once again, just my opinion, I think we, we didn't make the best, best decision tonight in that regard, at least in terms of the comprehensive plan. The other thing I wanted to, what I wanted to mention was, we, we as a new board, very late in the process, got involved with, with this very complex thing called budgeting. And it's, it's a challenge. It really is. There's a lot of, lot of information to, to put your arms around and to come to understand. And, uh, the process, and I'm not sure if it's just because we're new or any number of circumstances, in, in talking with my colleagues and also talking with Mr. Shardine and Ms. Schubert, I'm, I'm hopeful and encouraged that the budgeting process in the next fiscal year will be appreciably different and improved in terms of front-end loading workshops and giving us the opportunity to, to have kind of intelligent, informed conversations with staff and to understand some of the priorities. I'd also encourage staff to allow the strategic planning process, whether it be, no matter what the process, I believe whether we use a consultant or not, but that the process move forward and that that strategic plan, hopefully in the, certainly no later than the October timeframe, would serve as a foundation, giving, giving light to, to our vision, shared vision, not just the boards, but the Planning Commission, the EDAs, and other stakeholders in the community, that we could have a clear vision and use that as a foundation for our next budgeting cycle, and also for any, any kind of reviews that we might decide as a board to make around the comprehensive plan. So that strategic planning process is, I think, vitally important. And, and I encourage Mr. Shardine and Mr. Hegy to, to move full, full steam ahead to get that process underway. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Powers.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Ms. Morsette.
The motion that I made was not based on whether I like or dislike solar farms. It was based solely on information that I gathered throughout the period of time where this solar farm was trying to establish itself off of Route five twenty-two. And speaking with my, my representative in the planning, he expressed numerous things that said that it was not part of our comprehensive plan. And my decision was based on not wasting the time of our planning department when they could be best suited on doing things that are coming up. So my decision was not based on, I don't like a, a solar farm, or I do like a solar farm. It was based solely on the information that I was provided and information that I researched that, in my opinion, it did not conform to the comprehensive plan or to the future comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to thank Brett and the staff again for putting together a great budget and that we all proved up tonight. And we are going into closed session this time.
Are you ready?
Yes, Kim. Yep.
Yes, sir. Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Palatine County desires to discuss and close meeting the following matters. Discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public. public body concerning specifically the county attorney. Consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body concerning the act of litigation involving Palatán, including but not limited to Appomattox River LLC, Zakiya Callaway, Beckner, Gude, Shrim Shrimser, and I apologize if I mispronounced that, and the Tri-Hope cases. Whereas pursuant to Section two point two dash three seven one one A one and A seven of the Code of Virginia, such discussions may occur in a closed meeting. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Palatán County does hereby authorize discussion of the four stated matters in a closed meeting. I just need that in the form of a motion.
Make your motions.
Give me one second to get the certification.
What do you think the new chair is there? Miss Morsette?
I like him.
I just want the direction so I can fiddle with it.
Yeah, they got a number of controls that we have to learn.
They do, don't they? I found the up and down.
Up and down's a little.
Yeah, the little flap. What's the round thing? I would love it if it reclined.
Yeah, we're loud.
We are. Okay, I'm I'm ready. If you all want to make a motion to come out of close. Will you all want to make a motion to come out of close, and then I'll do the certification?
Make a motion to close.
All all in favor of coming out?
All in favor, I'm sorry.
Aye. Do you certify that, to the best of your knowledge, the only matters discussed in the closed meeting were the matters exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act? And only such matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered during the closed meeting? Um, Mr. Kenny?
Yeah.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Um, Mrs. Morsette?
Yes.
And Mr.?
Denotti.
Is it D?
Denotti.
Denotti.
Yes.
Sorry about that. That's all. Thank you.
Mean it, aren't?